Good afternoon. It is June the 10th and it's now 5:15 PM. And the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners Work Session Meeting is now in session. I'm going to call the role Commissioner Rutledge.
Here.
Commissioner Chismar.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
And Commissioner Chance.
Here.
All right, everyone's here this evening. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make the, have the approval, I'm sorry, of the agenda for this evening, June 10th, 2025, at 5:15 here at the Bel Air Town Hall.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance. And do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of this evening's agenda changes? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for approval of this evening's agenda. Commissioner Rutledge, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Eddie?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda is approved. Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of different items in no particular order. Start off with planning, just an update on the McComas property. Spoken with the McComas family. They have, they have engaged with an architect. The architect is meeting with us next week. Our team, actually Director Small, basically to talk about ideas, concepts, needs, whatever they might need to address, or to continue to come up with an idea for what they want to do with that property. They're also working on a survey of the property and they reassured me, as they do every call, that they are diligent and wanting to have these buildings gone. It's just a very slow process for them, but they are moving forward. I'm sure, I'm sure you may talk about this later under, under Commissioner's comments, but the Army Birthday Event this weekend went off fairly, very well. The only hindrance, as we all know, was the weather. Did not cooperate, but Plans B and Plan C came into, into effect and everything worked out well, came off without a hitch. I know Mr. Brown had publicly recognized me for the work, but it would be grossly unfair and hardly remiss if I didn't actually acknowledge the people who worked behind me to get this done. Obviously, working with Mr. Brown was amazing, good guy, very cooperative, very collaborative. But along with staff, Julia Potler, her staff worked very closely, Chief Moore and his staff, Steve Klein, Charlie Dawson, DPW crews, all worked amazingly well together. And interestingly enough, while this started out initially as a small concert, small event, as more hands got into the process, the bigger it became, the more complex it became, which makes our job a lot more difficult and a lot of things that went on behind the scenes that nobody had no idea we were doing, be off, all on behest of making the event better, most notably threat assessments, extra survey, greater involvement of town staff than what was originally anticipated in terms of providing appropriate road closures and providing the appropriate strength and strengthening and bollards at intersections to avoid the potential for a drive-through catastrophe or a critical event in that regard. So, very proud of the teams. DPW took extra time all last week to really go through with a fine-tooth comb and spruce up Shamrock Park. Not that it wasn't looking good already, but they made it look even five times better than what it was. So, my appreciation to staff and everyone that was involved, because of them, it came together very, very well. And of course, David, thank my thanks to David Anderson. He worked closely with the PD on getting the messaging out prior to the event and then during the day when we had to change direction because of the weather. The Chief and I have continued to work actively on pedestrian safety issues and our focus continues to be Route 924 at the Maunpaugh Cresting for Independent Brewery. That just, between that and the Army there, just the highlights of what I'm trying to find a way to correct, which are extremely difficult. But one of the ideas that was brought to our attention from a member of the Maunpaugh Trail Committee, the trail folks at maintenance that worked the committee, was what's called a HAWK system. That's the acronym. It stands for High Intensity Activated Crosswalk. And the idea is that it presents a better lighting system, better visibility, higher, higher warnings in terms of you have a yellow flashing light that attracts your attention than you have a red light. You have more than just two lights. If you notice, that light has two lights going north and two lights coming south that just flash. Technically, the people aren't required to stop for yellow. Even if they see the pedestrians on the sidewalk, they're still not required to stop. The only time they're required to stop is when a pedestrian steps in the road. Once they step in the road, they become fair game for any car that might potentially not see them. So, the higher visibility and recognition we can bring to this would be better. I know Commissioner Chance brought several people to the table from S.H.A., as well as the county and from her contacts over the years in county government, but I really don't know that what, what we want to do, S.H.A. is going to agree with in terms of whether or not the studies and the engineering concepts that they use. So, anyway, we're exploring the HAWK system and I bring it up only because Chief Moore had sent this recommendation down to S.H.A. We did receive a response from them and they would evaluate it and let us know in 90 days whether it would be satisfactory or not. I suspect for us to get really anything done at that intersection is going to require not only local commissioner involvement, but most likely state official involvement as well, depending on how hard we want to put it, push it. I have talked with Paul Magnus from Parks and Rec. We are putting signage on the trail, specifically in the section which would be on the east side of the trail, walking west, about 100, 150 feet before you get to the intersection to, for the people to alert that there's a signalized intersection ahead and for them to use the signal. Right now, the sign and the signal are together. So, when you stop, if you don't stop to read the sign or push the button, you don't get the benefit of a safe crossing. So, Paul's agreed to put those signs up. We really don't have an avenue for putting them on the other side of the street, but it still continues to be a concept they're working on and appreciate that the Chief did that. Chief and I have also had extensive conversations on the parking garage. As you and I, Commissioner Chismar, talked last week, there, it's extremely difficult to find a way to continue to do things at the parking garage short of complete and absolute fencing to protect and reduce the incidence of suicide. But what we are working on is, as part of the Vercata system, is exploring what's known as geo-fencing, which would be the opportunity to put sensors on the various levels that would alert us to the fact that someone is in the area where they would most likely attempt to take their life. These locations have typically been over top of concrete driveways and pads. So, that is one option we're looking at. We're also looking to seek the assistance of a local nonprofit group, nonprofit group who had expressed an interest in wanting to find a way to also help us. So, we talked about even additional signage and refreshing the signage that we have. So, that's a work in progress. And an interesting concept, too, that I've talked to people about, which most, some people don't get, unless you really think about it, is cultural artists exploring the opportunity of a mural or some type of family-focused center-type artwork on the stairwells or maybe in the garage themselves that maybe, we have no idea what would cause a person to change their mind. And if it helps change their mind, it doesn't matter to me what it is. If it helps change their mind, that's the direction we want to go. So, those are three ideas that we're currently exploring or working on. From the construction point of view for the town, and actually, this one's already hit social media about 45 minutes ago. County has begun to work on demolishing the building across from the fire department. That's the old liquor dispensary, the high store, Palms Pizza, two, two out of, actually, three out of three of my favorite places. But anyway, they are taking the building down. A lot of people are wondering what's going there. It's county property. As far as I know, it's just going to the ground to be leveled. There's no, I've not been advised of any particular plans for that, for that spot. Rowland Avenue and Robinson Street, construction should be complete on Rowland and Robinson on or about June 6th, which was last Friday. They still have some odds and ends to finish up. Paving will follow at some point. I think as-
Eddie, I can confirm they are not yet complete.
No, no, they're not. I talked to them this morning when they put a hole in the ground in front of my house again. But that hole actually is, is, has something to do with solidifying, making the roads sound and solid until they can do the paving. But I think they're done actual, all the piping work. So, they should be done, sorry, they should be, they should be done in a few more days, hopefully. And then Maryland American will be responsible for paving Robinson Street and the town is going to do Rowland. They will, they will follow. Thomas Street should be paved by June the 20th. Charlie Dawson, who's here tonight, is still coordinating with BGE on the light poles and what we're going to be putting down along Thomas Street. But hopefully, weather permitting, everything goes well, Thomas Street, hopefully, will be done by June the 20th. If you haven't driven down there, it's really quite impressive. It's taking shape. As you may or may not be aware, this is the nighttime job. Paving has begun on Baltimore Pike. That'll take a couple of weeks as well. They're paving Baltimore Pike from Tollgate Road to Main Street. We also have gas main work going on at night on Pennsylvania Avenue between extending all the way from Hayes to Main. If you followed it last week, they started here behind the library and they've worked themselves up Pennsylvania to Main. They're now getting ready to do the crossover and work over towards Hayes. That will require some road lane closures at night. They're not putting detours in place. We've actually talked to them about that, but they've chosen not to do that. They'll reduce everything to a single lane, which is fine. It's the nighttime. There's really not a lot of heavy traffic and very, very minimal impact to businesses and motorists at night. So, that's coming along very well. The, if you, if you've done any walking, as I know some of you do, you should have seen that Precision Concrete has been out working on doing sidewalk cutting. This, the sidewalk cutting allows us to knock down the tripping hazards. And if, it's interesting, if you, I've saw them out working. It's, it's kind of impressive work. The guy just walks, carries a vacuum cleaner behind him and a saw. And it's pretty impressive to watch them work. But if you've seen any of them, and several of them are quite obvious on sidewalks in town, they will reduce the tripping hazards, which reduces our risk and our liability. It's also very costly. It's also something that citizens don't technically pay attention to. It's something they should know about because it does, you know, it does impact the quality of life in town. We are actively working on two complaints. I know that, that we've received multiple complaints a week from various people about various things. And usually, I don't necessarily bother you all with them because they're, they're significant complaints for the complainant, but they, we handle them in-house quickly. However, there's two that we're working on that could rise to your attention because they're a little more high-profile. One is trash and untagged vehicles on the Kelly Fields Parking Lot over off of Bolton Street. We are coordinating with Harford County. The interesting thing about that lot is we own about six feet of it, down one straight line. The rest is owned by the county. And Kevin and I are trying to determine how much of that is, what is on our property and what is on the county property so that jurisdictionally, it's handled by the right authority. Pretty sure the trash is on our end of the property line, but the unregistered vehicle, the untagged vehicle is on the county's side of it. So, it's, it's one of those things where we talk about annexing little enclaves. This enclave just gives us a fit every time there's a complaint because people feel like they're getting their runaround when we tell them, no, you got to call the county and people think it belongs to us. I know that Commissioner Chis, oh, sorry. The second, second complaint is uncut grass on property adjacent to English Country Manor. We're addressing that as well. Some people thought that the property belongs to the county. It doesn't. Charlie Dawson is on top of that and is making contact with the property owner and with, like other mowing complaints, if they fail to mow, we do it and then backbill them through their taxes. And then the last two things, I know Commissioner Chismar responded to it on email today, but Bel Air has been identified as a banner city for 2025. Will receive the award at MML. I know he wants to discuss that later, so I'll stop, leave it at that. And then, under new business tonight, under letter D, section four. If you've noticed, Steve Klein and Lisa Moody are both on leave. They're off today. So, Liz will be discussing the condominium refuse removal contract in their stead. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Well, thank you for that update and I did want to compliment DPW. I had pointed out some grass that was almost two feet tall that I drove past every day and they were very quick to send a letter and it's mowed. And I drove past it this morning again and it's still looking pretty good. So, I think, you know, I'm hoping that's resolved. And secondly, on the garage, I know we've had more saves than we've had losses, which is terrific, but losses of zero would be even better. And I know we're looking at some, some things to address that further. So, thank you for that update. Anything, anyone else have any questions for Eddie?
This isn't a question, but I want to say thank you for working on the crosswalks and just the safety of people walking in town. It's just, I, I drive on Main Street more than I can even count every day and it's, it's scary. It's, it's really scary. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
All right, next up, we have our tentative agenda for the town meeting, which will be on June the 16th at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. And first at that meeting, we'll have a presentation of the Chesapeake Employers Insurance Company and Wilson Oliver Agency will be presenting a dividend check to the town, which I always let money go in that direction. So, Pam, are you going to address that?
It'll actually be addressed later on.
Oh. All right. I don't see it on my agenda. It's somewhere else. Oh, in the budget amendments. Okay, there you go. And we will also have the presentation of some town derby certificates. For those who couldn't make the last meeting, we'll see who.
Right. I, I have no idea who's going to show up. I'm not sure, but we'll have them ready in case they do.
It'll be like the last time. We'll have them ready. Anybody that is able to make this meeting, we will make the presentations and take care of those that weren't able to make either meeting in some other fashion.
And I was going to ask that question. Is it our intention to mail for folks who don't, didn't show up to either? How are we going to get those out the door?
Don't know.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm not sure. I suspect we will mail them or get them back to Dave or we'll-
We'll figure it out.
Figure it out.
They will get them in some fashion. Pickup, delivery, US mail, something.
That's a good question.
Fax.
Fax, yeah.
We hand-delivered some last year who didn't pick up and then we tossed a couple in the mail. So, we did a little bit of both.
Whatever's, whatever works, kind of, which is, you know, Michael Krantz's motto. We will follow up with the public hearing on Resolution 1253-25, amending the Town of Bel Air fee schedule. Michael?
Yes, thank you. This is a one-item amendment to the fee schedule, which has to do strictly with, let me pull up the section, has to do strictly with the county's system development fee, which is collected by the Town of Bel Air on behalf of Harford County. And it's the standard 4.5% annual increase. That's coming across per 30 fixture units. So, that would be the only item coming up for a vote before you on Monday with regards to the fee schedule.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Michael on that? It's really just a pass-through for those who are watching at home. We collect it for the county and they set what the dollar figure is. All right, then we have the Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement between the Town of Bel Air and Verizon, which will be discussed in more detail in our closed session. And under unfinished business, we will have Resolution 1253-25, amending the Town of Bel Air fee schedule for a vote. Under new business, we will have Resolution 1254-25, fiscal year 2025 budget amendment. And now Pam's going to tell us about the dividend.
Yes, so Lisa's finalizing the details on the FY25 budget amendment, but she asked that I review a few of the highlights. So, the amendment will introduce, be introduced on Monday with the public hearing at July's meeting. And as we did last year, we are recommending to use the $72,000 2023 Chesapeake Employers work, workers' comp dividend check for employee bonus checks. The maximum for full-time, non-sworn employees would be $1,000 with the minimum at 250. The maximum for part-time, non-sworn employees would be $500 with the minimum at 125. The variation of check amounts depends on the date of hire to tie into the 2023 policy year. Sworn officers are receiving bonus checks through a recruitment and retention grant of $730. So, their town bonus could potentially be 270 to equate, an additional 270 to equate to the $1,000 maximum depending on their hire date. We're going to account for the $111,000 check received from Legit. An audit of premiums since 2015 was conducted, which showed that Bel Air was overcharged by that amount. Removal of the Maunpaugh Comfort Station project of $175,000 since the direction of the project is on hold. Savings from departmental salary and benefits resulting from vacancies. Adding stormwater management project on Rowland that will be reimbursed by the residents over two years, starting in FY26. ARPA adjustments for the Thomas George Street project. An increase in interest on investments to account for the ARPA earnings since inception. An increase in real property taxes based on to-date assignments. And then the final point is reduction of transfer to capital reserves for vehicle equipment and capital projects. This should be able to be funded mostly with additional revenues, which is good news with utilizing that reserve. And Lisa will send you additional details in an email.
Thank you. Any questions for Pam?
Madam Chair, if I may add to that, in case you have questions, the Maunpaugh Comfort Station, which has been on, on, well within our radar for years. I happened to come across and have a conversation with county officials. That, that project was pulled by the county during this most recent budget process. While the, I, while their logic, I believe, is that they might be able to build a structure in-house, but within-house engineers as opposed to purchasing a structure that is already made. They're debating that and determining what is the best avenue. So, for right now, they put it on hold, which means we have to return the money on paper to where we had planned to take it from. It is still, I would still like it to be my intent to partner with them on this if and when they come to a decision. But for right now, it's been, that's why that money was, was moved.
That was going to be my question. You're reading minds.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions regarding the budget amendment?
What account was that taken out of the conversations?
That would have come out of Capital Reserve. It originally started in ARPA and I am thankful that we moved it out of ARPA to Capital Reserve. So, while the money never, while the money never left us, it was on paper. It needs to go back.
I'm glad it's a Capital Reserve, nothing-
Me too. All right. Any further question about the budget amendment? All right, we'll look for the details from Lisa. Next, we have the Information Technology Service Contract Renewals for Malware Bytes, Barracuda Total Email Protection, Barracuda Backup, Cradle Point Net Cloud, Cisco SmartNet, Fortinet, and Know Before Security Training. Who, that's, Mike is taking care of that. There you go. Yeah. That security training is getting tougher to not make a mistake on. I got one recently.
Did we get you?
No, you didn't get me, but I was like, I don't, that doesn't seem right. I'll just like, say no.
Some of them have been pretty tricky.
They are tricky.
We do have some employees who've been tripped up and they get reported back to our technology manager and he refocuses some additional training on them through, through this type of software. So, we, this is one of the ones we'd like to keep.
Oh, I, I think it's a really great idea.
Going into the next fiscal year. And it's also going to, it's also going to help with just education all around, all around. In addition to that, onsite backups, in addition to that, you know, email protection as well as Cisco support for our latest software and updates for our network hardware, potentially Cisco servers. You know, like you mentioned, the Know Before Security Awareness Training. In addition to that is antivirus protection through malware bytes. All of that comes together through a competitively bid process that would be piggybacking on through the city of Mesa, Arizona, with SHI, Incorporated. SHI was the lowest bidder on the majority of those, of those services and softwares. And you can see the combined proposals all come together. They add up to about $50,409. So, we would be asking you to-
$58,409 and 99 cents.
That's correct, and 99 cents. We'd be asking you to review those contracts and vote on those on, on Monday. And if you have any questions between either tonight or between now and then, don't hesitate to, to ask. But Josh and I are still working on additional, Josh, our technology manager and I, we're still working on additional contracts. You'll see other contracts coming before you, probably in the next couple of months, for servers, for other hardware such as laptops and computers, as well as there are going to be a pretty big purchase upcoming for tough books for the police cars. So, you'll see that coming up too. But these are the ones whose contracts are expiring right at the fiscal year. So, there's a certain urgency for us to get these particular ones before you as soon as possible.
Any questions for Mike about the computer contract? Nope. All right. In that case, next, we'll go to the Live View Technology Portable Surveillance Camera System Lease Renewal. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to be presenting to you and the commissioners an agenda item for a lease renewal for the Live View Technologies Portable Surveillance Camera System. As you are aware, over the last several years, the Town of Bel Air and the region has experienced a great increase in the number of retail thefts in the area and we continue to benefit from the successes in combating this increase in crime by deployment of the Live View Portable Surveillance Camera System. Our strategy involves keeping track of the theft data at retail locations and posting the Live View Technologies camera accordingly in retail parking lot locations. And we also use it to monitor special events. It's become very handy with us and we've, this will be the second year, I think we've, second year that we have used the system. And again, we've experienced a lot of successes with it. The Live View Technology Systems remains in compliance with Maryland Public Safety Code concerning the use of captured license plate data. And our town procurement regulations allow us for purchases based on sole source justification and this qualifies for that. The FY26 budget provides for funding for the LVT contract system and it will become active after July 1st, 2025. And actually, we're, this cost of the lease this year is $33,000, which is 2,000 less than last year. So, we're getting a deal on it.
Chief, as we've moved forward with Vercata, do you see that system obsoleting this or augmenting it?
It's a good question and that's why we're doing it one-year intervals because as we continue to roll out the Vercata system, this will probably, that will probably replace the Live View Technologies, technology, system.
You stole my question, so.
Got to be quicker than that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the Chief? All right, moving on to the award of the contract for the Condominium Refuse Removal Services. Liz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Lisa Moody and Steve Klein, they're going to be presenting you with a contract for Casilla Waste Systems, Inc. from Conning Road and Street, Maryland, for trash removal and recycling removal for 14 condominium units or communities in, within the municipal limits of the Town of Bel Air. This is as a result of a piggyback contract that was awarded by Harford County to Casilla. So, I've been working with Steve, given the whole tipping fee situation and a couple of changes. So, I've been working with Steve and Lisa on this. So, they'll have that ready for you guys at the next Town Hall meeting.
Thank you very much. And this is the entity that's currently doing it, as I recollect. So, and they, they've been working for the county for a while. They've also been doing ours and so far, I haven't heard any complaints or anything. So, you might have any other questions for Liz on that one? Commissioner Liaison reports. I'll start. The Tree Committee will be meeting tomorrow. They will be discussing some, the 2025 tree plan. So, if anybody has anything they want to let the Tree Committee know, you can send me an email or a text or whatever and I'll, I'll pass it along. The sign at the Major's Choice Oak, which has been the subject of some speculation on social media. When I do see it, I let people know that the sign is coming. It's being replaced. Some people are concerned that the oak had lost its title as a champion and that is not, not in fact true. So, the sign will eventually be replaced. Anybody else?
Appearance and Beautification did meet last night. The biggest update from that committee, of course, is the planting of the Flatiron, which I'm sure everybody has noticed by now, looks fantastic. I actually wasn't able to make that meeting, so I would yield to Deputy Director Dawson, who was there because Director Klein wasn't able to make it either. Any updates you'd like to add, Charlie, from last night?
I was not there, but that's okay.
Oh, okay.
But we sent, we sent one of our, Josh Pilates went for it.
I apologize.
And other than some high grass issues, there was not much to, other than they did compliment the Flatiron and how it turned out and everything went well, but yeah.
Yeah, that has been that committee's big push over the past couple of months. It's definitely been one of their biggest successes in recent memory, I think, now looking at it. There was a lot of thought that went into the flowers chosen and I think it's a really nice compliment to those who are coming into the downtown from the North End on Bond Street, traveling south.
It really does look great. I mean- I mean, once again, I pass it multiple times a day, and, um, it really does look wonderful. Thanks, Charlie. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, the Planning Commission met last Thursday. Uh, basically, three things were on the agenda. One was the Vietnamese noodle restaurant on, was it one oh-two South Bond, one oh-two North Bond, on North Bond. Um, that got pushed back to another date because, um, they had some color changes on the building that needed to be reviewed by the architect, and they hadn't seen the architect's report yet. Did they, Kevin, did they resolve the rear setback? Did they have drawings to update the rear setback issue? Or that needs to be reviewed?
Um, I met with, uh, the engineer today, and they have corrected their site plan to include that setback from one oh-eight North Bond.
I think those are the two major...
And the, uh, on-street parking on Alisan Street.
And the on-street parking.
Yeah.
I thought that was resolved, that they had the parking spaces redid for that.
They had given us an exhibit, but they need to show it on the site plan.
Okay. They need to show it on the site plan. Okay. And, and one other thing that came up was that, um, that Don Coats brought up on the Planning Commission was that since it's next to a historic designated property, um, even though the property that they're built, that they're developing is not historic, that that property has some impact on the designs, that they, design guidelines that they must follow. So, I mean, it was kind of, it was interesting, because, you know, the thing was that they didn't have a say necessarily in whether the adjacent property was designated historic or not, but they have to abide by the fact that the owner wanted it designated. So, anyway, it's probably just something that needs to be, I don't know if we want to look at that or have the Historic Dish, Historic Preservation Committee look at that, Jim? Were you, did you under, were you there for that part of the meeting?
I was. I, I, we have a different perception of, of Don's point.
Okay.
I think Don was just saying that he didn't think it was fair for the development that was in front of them to feel in any way obliged to succumb to any pressures from a neighbor that may be in historic preservation. That was the concept, that I thought he was just making a statement that it wa, it wouldn't be fair for the project, because the project in front of them absolutely has no restriction by the Historic Preservation Commission or Historic Preservation Law.
Not one oh-two North Bond, no.
No. So, so, so I think he was stating that it wouldn't be, that it, I, I don't think he was saying that they were impacted by it, but that people, just because you buy a lot beside historic preservation, it, it, it doesn't obligate you at all to abide by anything in historic preservation, because your lot's not in it.
No, but I, I think the way the rule, correct, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the way the, the ordinance is set, is, states is that if you're adjacent to an historic property, you must build it somewhat in kind to that property historic.
Right. They're looking for, um, what they call in harmony...
Yeah, yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with our town ordinance.
I think if...
No, it is in the code.
Is it in the code?
It is in the code.
Yeah, there are three locations in the, in the, in the town code that, uh, talk about this situation, and it's, um, it requires the Planning Commission and the architectural consultant to look at the, uh, proposed development to make sure that it is in harmony with the materials, the colors, things like that. It doesn't have to match that, but it, it needs to have, it needs to be complementary to the adjacent property.
Transition.
And that was, because if you look at what's being proposed, it's not necessarily the same. It's just, like I said, complementary. Uh, I do like the result. I think the result has been, is, is a good compromise, but it is something that if, if the, if you guys want to take a look at it, we certainly can't.
I'm not following, so I'm not gonna pursue the analysis. I don't know enough about it.
Well, I mean, it's just saying that you have to consider the adjacent property and any other development. You don't have to consider the architecture of the adjacent property.
Is there an opportunity when a, when a property is being designated historic, is there a proper, is there an opportunity for public comment to come and oppose that designation?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So I think the conversation that you and I were having, Steve, is that, you know, whoever the property owner was before, previously, could have come and opposed that designation at the public hearing. They have the right to do that, but, you know, when you buy that piece of property, caveat emptor, you know, it comes with that.
Right.
Stipulation.
Stipulation, right.
Yeah.
Well, but I was just saying that, but, uh, Mr. Coats brought it up, so I just thought maybe it might be worth taking a look at.
I can send those sections out to everybody. You can take a look at them.
Just to see...
Sure, I'm, I'm willing to take a look at it. I mean, well, there might need to be a change. My view is, it shouldn't have any impact on it whatsoever. It's private property, you shouldn't, you should be able to do the maximum under the rule, and just 'cause somebody else went to the Historic Preservation Commission, um, you know, I, 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 I think it ought to have zero impact on it. But apparently, it does, and that's too bad for private property owners and free enterprise. So, you know, I'm always in favor of free enterprise and the rights of the private property owner. So, you know, I'm not, not aware of that, 'cause I'm just learning about the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm not an expert on the topic, and I misunderstood then what, um, uh, Mr. Coats was saying, 'cause my perception was that it was late in the evening, he was making a comment that he wasn't sure that, my impression was, he wasn't sure that that was exactly fair.
Well, Jim, I, and I think also, you're looking at it from, having attended just the second hearing, the architect consultant had pinged the applicant twice and said, "You did not comply," based on his opinion...
Yeah.
"...with these three provisions of the code." And they had to do with the historic harmony of the adjoining and the setbacks and lining it up with the porch, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's all fine. I'm not commenting on this particular project. I'm just sharing my basic philosophy, that if we can do anything to enhance free enterprise, I want to do it.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is that I did, you know, sort of question this when it first came in. Kevin and I talked about the historic, um, designation next door and what the code provides, and the, my first gut reaction was, "Does this have to go to our Historic Preservation for commentary?" Like, and, you know, an advisory sort of opinion, 'cause they're technically our experts, for lack, lack of better word, right?
Right.
And Kevin's like, "No, they don't." So it might be something we might want to take a look at it at a later time, but, you know, they, that's, it's, it's up to you guys, you know?
Right.
Certainly, given an eye, I'll certainly look at it if you want.
When, and when they came in, when they were looking actually purchasing the property to develop this, um, we kind of made them aware that they were going to be purchasing a property that was next to a historically designated property, and that would, that would impact the architecture on their property.
Yeah, they were told.
They were told, okay.
And we can talk about it further, but just, the council can inform me. So are we required by state law to do that?
No.
Or not?
Entirely town code, really.
All right.
I think the concept is obviously...
We could liberalize it.
Correct, but you could, you know, you're, it's also, you're generalizing a particular term under zoning law, which is, is it in harmony with the neighborhood?
Right.
You've got that always kind of look to it, you know, is it, is it not, you know, from architectural, I mean, I'm not qualified to say it is or it isn't, but that is a legal concept that we've argued before court. It's not in harmony with the neighborhood. You know, we got a pretty little shotgun house that's yellow next door, and you're putting a black building up next door, that's not in harmony. So you want to kind of keep that in mind, too.
And that, that, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask this question.
Okay.
Um, does the rule of the review for harmony apply in every, um, zoning district in Bel Air?
It applies throughout zoning approvals.
Throughout Bel Air?
In, in skate law, in general, yes. It's a principle of zoning law.
And that's in our code, so if, so if you bought a lot in, uh, R one district, the town's gonna decide whether or not the house you built was in harmony with the neighbor?
It's, yeah, it's a general, depending on, yeah, what your request is, what's next door, what's across the street, what's this, what's that, you know?
I just have problems with that. I, I do. And I'm sorry, I'm new to this, but, but I just think that's not, that's not free market. That's not.
Well, well, think of it as another example, Jim. I mean, and this is just an academic discussion.
Yeah.
Um, so you had a dispute recently with Broadway, and the client's wanting to put a potentially, an apartment building behind their grocery store. So there is a potential argument, and I'm not saying it's a successful one, but, you know, just to play the game, right? You've got single family on one side, you got a grocery store commercial on the front, and then you're gonna throw apartments on the back? That, that seems kind of mixed, right? That might be a good argument for, it's not in, really in harmony with the existing neighborhood. Is it really flowing through?
Yeah.
You know, I, again, academic, I'm, you know, I'm not saying there's an issue.
Right. It's, 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 it's a type of aesthetic zoning that has no definition.
Correct. And it's based upon architects', you know, professional opinions, the subjective opinions of the Planning Commission members, you know, it's, it's just an overall kind of umbrella thing.
Okay. And just to clarify, any single-family home that's put in is never reviewed for architecture?
That's what I was wondering.
That's the only thing that is accepted from everything else. All the other multifamily, commercial, they all get reviewed.
Right. But thank, thank you for that clarification. That's my point. If you bought, you bought, bought a lot and, uh, and you wanted to demolish an old house and build a new house, does the, the, the town fathers tell you what it's gotta look like? Seemed to me to be, you know, anti-freedom. Okay?
Yeah.
The house, yeah, that's, you know...
The, the other major issue, or the other major topic for the mall, was the mall, the redevelopment of the mall, which was the Phase Three. Uh, they came in with that, it was probably about five buildings in total...
Uh, five uses, four buildings.
Five uses, four buildings in total, and there was, that was also delayed, as was the Vietnamese restaurant, until that was the development there on Bond Street. But this was also put off to the next meeting. Um, there were some issues about the loading dock, um, can they get vehicles in there? There was dumpster locations and screenings. Uh, there were some walkways about providing better walkability.
Green space.
Open space, there were some things, and also, we wanted to see a little bit more open spaces. I think four of the buildings had outdoor patios, which was set aside for dining. Nice to see some more openness in there, you know, some green space and whatever. And then, also, there's like a cross-campus drive that goes across that some people were thinking might need to be, have some speed reduction control devices, whether it be roundabouts or bumps or something, so they're gonna look at those and come back. I think they're gonna have a special meeting for that one on June seventeenth?
Uh, July seventeenth.
July seventeenth. Correct. And then the, um, and they're still gonna have the, the Planning Commission meeting on the third of July to deal with the, um, updated drawings for the Vietnamese noodle restaurant. The other thing was that also Commissioner Rutledge brought in, uh, gave a rundown on the, the STR legislation. Um, I, I think they were for that, and I think in all, in all districts, I believe, in both ours and the, and the commercial, um, I didn't have too much on that. Did you want to add anything more to that, Jim? About what the discussion?
No, I thought they unanimously approved it.
Yeah.
Endorsed it.
I'll send out a memo at some point. I'm waiting for the minutes for that meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I think that covered the three main things, right? That was the three main things?
Yes. Yeah, he just talked.
The short term, yeah. Okay.
All right. Anything else from any of the commissioners? All right, then we're moving on to the staffing update. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we've recently extended an offer to a laborer, so we'll be welcoming a, a new laborer in the Department of Public Works, uh, relatively shortly, and, uh, the police ad for, uh, laterals, I think, is coming to a close, if it hasn't already come to a close. So at the moment, we, uh, don't have any jobs posted.
That's amazing. Congratulations on filling that laborer position.
Knock on wood.
Again.
Yeah, again.
All right.
If you do want to look at your handout for, uh, committee board and commission vacancies coming up, we still have the vacancy on Board of Ethics, uh, vacancy on Board of Appeals, and then as we get into the fall, will be a vacancy on, oh, excuse me, Board of Building Appeals for August, and then Board of Appeals in October, and the Tree Committee later in October as well.
And I would just point out, for the, the good of the order, that Sue's appointment lapses on the nineteenth. Um, our only meeting in July is on the twenty-first. I don't expect the Board of Appeals being called in for an emergency Sunday meeting, so I think we're okay. Um, but I think, uh, we really want to have somebody on deck for that July twenty-first meeting, just so that it doesn't carry over another month into August of the vacancy. Again, it's not like there's anything crazy going on, but it's always good to keep a full deck, uh, at all times, so hopefully, we can get somebody in front of us within the next month, because, you know, we're now too late to finish it for June before the vacancy lapses, but that's okay. One day of vacancy isn't gonna kill us, so hopefully, we have somebody by that July twenty-first meeting.
Yeah. If something comes up, we do have a quorum. We have, we'll have the four members.
And then, we also was just informed today that we have another vacancy on the Board of Appeals. Charmaine Hess, uh, has turned in her resignation. So that will, um, so we need to find someone for them, and then both Rob and, and Rick, I gotta reach out to them, or Kevin, have you reached out to them? I thought, I thought I said I would, right?
Uh, yeah, I have not.
Okay, so I'll, I'll still take that back off.
Okay.
And Mr. Merkel is not going to continue on the Tree Committee. Um, so we do have Greg O'Hare, who is interested in serving. He attended, like, the last meeting. I saw an email that he said he would be submitting his application prior to our meeting tomorrow with the Tree Committee. I don't know if he's done that, and it's just gone somewhere, I haven't seen it yet, but at any rate, uh, he is gonna be a terrific addition. He's very experienced, he's on the forestry board, he has a great background, and he's already at the meetings, talked about a number of, you know, interesting things about trees that show the depth and breadth of his knowledge, so I'm really looking forward to him being on board, although I will miss Mr. Merkel, who had been on for years and years, so...
I haven't seen, is he's going to send his application, 'cause I don't think that's...
He said he was going to, and he said he was going to do it before our Tree Committee meeting tomorrow, so if he's there tomorrow, I will ask. I don't know if he sent it to Laura. Has anybody monitoring her email?
With, for Laura?
Mm-hmm.
I have, uh, we are monitoring, but I have not, I did not ask whether there was anything from him.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, he might have sent it to her. I, I have not seen it, you have not seen it, um, tomorrow, if he's at the meeting, and I kind of think he might be, I will talk to him about it. The, the other thing is, Mr. Merkel has not been to several meetings, so I'm, you know, not sure if we need, I mean, we could wait to the expiration of his term, but if he is, I'm not sure if he's resigned or if he wants to finish. I think he may be interested in resigning at this point, but...
I can reach out to him, or if he's there tomorrow, and we'll talk to him.
He hasn't been in the last couple, I will let you know if he comes tomorrow, and then we can move from there, maybe reach out to him.
And I will be there tomorrow night, um, 'cause I'll be introducing Wakar Shaw, who will take over for Laura. I apologize that it's kind of been a, uh, mixed bag for the seven, last many months because of medical issues and whatnot, but Wakar will take over.
I will definitely be there. I will let you know if he shows or not, and I will ask him if he's submitted. Um, but, you know, it's a long way to go, I guess, from June to October, although I think the Tree Committee skips a meeting or two.
Typically, they take the summer off.
A summer off, so it may not be that big of a deal, but we'll think about that.
Okay.
All right, anything further on our, uh, staffing for boards, committees, and commissions? All right, so we need, we have one person for the Tree Committee, we need one person for Ethics, and we need one person for Board of Appeals, did you say? Okay.
And need to check on two, if two.
To, to see if Rick Garrity and, uh, Rob Preston wanna continue to serve, okay.
And Greg, Board, Board of Building Appeals, we need somebody for?
I think Steve said he was gonna check with Greg to see if he would continue, and since they've had zero meetings, it's not, uh, heavy lift, but we need to have people on that board in the event that, you know, we do need someone to, to hear an issue. So maybe, um, Charlie, you could like just check on that for us, see if, if Steve has reached out to him, or if he wants somebody else to do it, just so we know if, if, um, Greg is willing to continue to serve.
Greg is also on the Board of Appeals, so he could be on both, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
No prohibition.
Just wanna make sure. And Building Appeals. No, I, that's why I was asking.
We're happy to have people volunteer as much as they are willing to, to do, yes, all right. Well, yeah, the, the Board of Building Appeals, and Steve's memory has not had an issue come before it, so. Hopefully that continues, but it's, he was wise to staff it just in case something comes up. All right, if we have nothing more on those things, we're up to the calendar. We all got a fresh copy today. And June is rapidly passing us by. And we have a couple of July things canceled for summer break, so that, as well as in August, so we can update everyone's calendar. So if anyone has any changes, or additions, or finds anything that's not quite right, we can let Ruth and Mike know, and they will make the necessary adjustments. Anything else on the calendar?
I think Commissioner Chance reminded me that the Bel Air Farmers Market is coming up for their fiftieth anniversary celebration.
Next Saturday.
Twenty-first, so mark your calendars.
You will, commissioners will be receiving an invitation to attend, um, at nine-thirty that morning. Celebration, if you will. So please make an effort to attend.
All right. Fifty years is, is quite an accomplishment.
And Paul, I don't know if you made, made a mention of it, but this, this week's summer concert will be on Saturday versus Sunday, because of Father's Day, so if anybody's listening.
That's an important, important note.
Let people know that.
All right. Miscellaneous, a review of Maryland law regarding accessory dwelling units, brought to us by the Maryland State Legislature. Kevin?
What we, uh, this was on the list of priorities, I believe, that, uh, Mr. Hopkins had, was looking at. We, we wanted to combine two of the state laws that we needed to review between Liz and myself and Eddie. And, um, I'm starting with the ADU requirements. This was one that was a little worrisome when it first started out. It got pretty well rescinded, uh, a lot of sections of that, of the, uh, the bill were, were revised or removed. There are some, uh, items that we need to make sure that we review. One is the definitions of ADU and dwelling unit, make, to make sure that we're somewhat consistent with the state definition. Another one is, um, the accommodation of vehicles. Our code, the way our code views ADUs, is that it, it leaves it up to the planning commissions to review it on a case-by-case basis. Some areas may need, um, additional parking because there's none on the street, some, some areas may not. Um, so it, it really does not address vehicles on site. Also, an ADU, the way the state law reads, cannot be included in density calculations. And of course, our code is silent to that, so, um, there is really no instance where we would call an ADU an extra dwelling, as far as density goes. The setbacks, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that was a question I had on that, on that section, which, so how does that address APF? When you say density, does that have any, does it count toward APF, adequate public facilities, or does it not?
I don't believe there's any density restrictions for, under APF. Uh, there are density restrictions in general in the, uh.
Well, that whole paragraph there is exclude development of accessory dwelling unit from the calculation of density, and the application of any measures limiting residential growth that pertains to the lot, parcel, or tract and proposal for the development of the accessible, accessory dwelling unit.
So you couldn't use APF to stop an ADU?
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So it doesn't apply?
It does not apply.
You don't apply that as a separate dwelling toward APF, okay. And it don't, well, that stuff only counts also if we're doing five or more.
Yeah, it's.
So, okay.
But if it changed, and I know there is a work group to look at it, if it changed, it can't apply, this, that law is gonna apply.
Okay.
The, um, the setbacks for an ADU, um, must be the same as other accessory structures. Uh, and we, um, ours does not increase those setbacks. Uh, it does allow for the planning commission to do so, and again, by case-by-case. So if there is a, uh, somebody has an existing garage that they're, they're wanting to create an ADU with, and it is right next to somebody else's principal house, there may be a requirement for, you know, some kind of additional setback. Um, or if they're building, like, I shouldn't say an existing garage, but if they're building one, they may ask for additional setback. But in this case, I think they would probably be precluded from doing so, because the state law does not allow that. They have to use the accessory dwelling unit setbacks, which is three feet. So you can be as close as three feet to your neighbor and still have an ADU in that, in that structure.
So on my two-tenths of an acre lot, in a residential neighborhood, I can drop a building behind my house and call it an accessory dwelling unit and let somebody rent it?
Yes. And right now, the way our code reads, the planning commission could push that away, but the state law would preclude that.
And your HOA can't stop it either.
I know, I noticed that, um, and, and I, you know, it brings up the question of like interfering with contracts. Uh, I'm not sure, I don't think I had the spare time to go and fight this in court, but, you know, somebody might, I mean, it's just.
If you recall, I recall a conversation that we had probably two years ago, and I said, you know y'all hate your HOAs.
Correct, but it protects you from certain things, yes.
In this case, it was like someone was listening, going, yeah.
Yes, they, they did miss that on some of their legislation, but they caught it on, on this one.
Right.
And I just, I don't know what they're thinking, but it just seems if all of, say, Major's Choice, which is about split half and half, single-family and townhouse, decided to put an accessory dwelling in it in the rear of their home, I cannot imagine the, uh, degradation in quality of life for the residents with the, over, it would just be so crowded.
It will not be near, it would be much worse than just a STR in a five-hundred-square-foot room with the owner on the property.
I agree.
And, and, and so while we're on that topic of rental, so the, 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 the law, you, you, we, we can't no longer have this idea that an ADU can only be used for like a family member, whatever, it can be rented.
My next item.
Yeah, that's something we kind of.
It's. This, this new, um, these changes, uh, prevent an HOA from imposing unreasonable limitation, unreasonable limitations, uh, on use. Uh, and I think it's not just the HOA, it's, the same vague language can be applied to the political subdivision that you're in. So the town, um, by the fact that we limit ADUs to extended family, it is a vague restriction that may or may not be enforceable. And I'm, that's the way I left it with Liz, is it would, you know, where do we head with that? Because it's, uh, I, I consider it, you know, a, uh, if, if you desire to keep the, the occupants of an ADU to be either a caregiver or extended family, would somebody come along and say, well, that's an unreasonable limitation to creating an ADU?
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm looking at, um, paragraph B-one, before we get to the list, where they added the language, you know, there cannot be, you cannot impose any unreasonable limitation on the ability of the property owner to develop, and then added the language, or offer for rent.
Yeah.
An accessory dwelling unit.
See, the, if you read the code, the requirement is, is while it's limited to a family member, they have to produce a lease. That is in my, in my craft, they have to produce a lease.
Yeah, you're looking at the top of page eleven?
No, no, town, town code, they have to produce a lease between the family member and the homeowner.
Yes, 'cause you have to have some kind of a, uh, uh, method of enforcement, so yeah.
Yeah, so, um, now, it says, you know, a dollar for a year, right? But at the same time, if you read what the legislative intent is, right, of that bill, is to increase affordable housing. If you're limiting it to my, uh, husband's brother's daughter's son, um, or in this sphere of a family relationship, that's not helping the housing issue that the state is trying to correct. So I think it's one of those things where the commissioners may wanna fall in line with the state, or you may wanna wait and see what happens.
So my question is, for the purpose of that section, to, may not impose an unreasonable limitation on the ability of the property owner to develop or offer for rent. Unreasonable limitation is defined as, well, it includes a limitation that prohibits either, either explicitly or by effect of the restrictions, the development, the development of an accessory dwelling unit.
Correct.
So that's just talking about your ability to build one there. Now, again, I understand it uses that word, includes, but, you know.
It's not only, so it could be, um, anything related to the use of the property could be construed as an unreasonable restraint on the development. Does that make sense?
No, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, I'm saying, but the key word there is could be construed.
Could be construed.
And it's also worth noting that it does specifically carve out that unreasonable limitation does not include a limitation on short-term rental.
Correct, and I think this was one of the discussions that Mayor Edding had at MMA one year, and they kinda went, well, we'll leave it to the courts to figure it out. So we may have to just leave it to the courts to figure out. I mean, I hate to say that, but I wish I had a clear answer for you.
Right, okay. So in other words, short-term rental, we can definitely restrict, long-term rental, much murkier?
That's a good way to put it.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's clear, offer for rent is not limited to who you offer it to. And I think offer for rent's offer for rent. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah.
I, 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 I think to try to say you can only offer to rent to family members or caretakers is adding language that the General Assembly didn't add, and I think we're gonna lose that case. Um, but clearly, we can, you can continue to prohibit the short-term rentals in the ADUs.
Yeah, because, I mean, a short-term rental.
I mean, why would they even address that is, is a short-term rental if, if they were implying that you could limit all rentals just to family members?
Correct, yeah, yes. And, I mean, short-term rentals, I mean, if you go just to the purpose of the bill, it, it doesn't solve the problem. By their very nature, they're short-term. They're a bridge between, you know, a hotel, and, you know, and, you know, that kind of thing. But when you're talking about what the purpose of that bill is, is to increase the, the supply of housing, yeah. You're looking at a more long-term rental situation in a more conventional fashion, I think.
Yeah, I agree with that, absolutely.
So, but, I mean, you, you know, you guys, yeah, you, we can obviously continue to talk about it, but I mean, you guys, if you wanna change it, that's fine, well, you know, if not, that's fine too, and we'll see what happens. I'm certainly not saying, oh my gosh, we might get in serious trouble for this.
Some thought is to mull it over here for a little while?
I think we'll mull for a while.
So walk through what happens if there's a challenge. If we don't change, somebody comes in and wants to do something before the planning commission, or just build a home, or whatever, what's, what's the process?
I'll let Liz correct me, but to me, somebody comes in and says, I wanna put a ADU in here, and I don't wanna limit it to my relatives. At that point, and then, and then they come back, or, you know, we may tell them, well, you can only do it to the relative. They come back and say, well, I'm gonna go talk to my lawyer. We're, we're headed, you know, I don't think we wanna go to court, and I think what we would end up doing is just changing the law at that point.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you get a lawyer who knows owning law, and they're looking at this, and they're saying, okay, I'm gonna use this as an opportunity. Let's say it's, you know, somebody who's building up, buying up foreclosures, and then developing ADUs on these foreclosure lots, right, to increase their rentals. And, and they, they know what they're doing. They're going to likely win. Um, because I don't, they're gonna say you're not complying, your, your zone, your town zone is not complying with that. So basically, what would happen is, the court would strike that requirement from our code. Damages, you know, how much damage is, you're probably gonna get to Circuit Court unless you appeal it, so. You know, that's the process. They would have to go through the administrative process, to answer your question, go through the planning commission, and get planning commission, and Kevin say, no, granddad's not in there, it's your college roommate. Um, you can't do this, and you'd have to get a no in order to really, really challenge it.
Right.
So.
And then they can bring it up before the board, bring it up before us to change the law, so that the planning commission, or whatever, and have the right laws that could grant it.
I, I mean, they could.
They could do that, or they could just take it to court.
Court, I mean, that, you saying, okay, I'm gonna change it, doesn't undo a denial from the planning commission. So if you change, if, if someone, if the planning commission says no, and they wanna challenge the fact that this is a problem, they go to court. They could ask you to change the law, but that doesn't undo the denial. They'd have to resubmit to the planning commission.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yes, they have to resubmit to the planning commission.
Pursue their administrative remedy.
Now we have the updated rules, and we can address whether your project meets the updated rules or not.
Yeah, I mean, there's always, um, lawyers that will sort of lobby the legislative bodies, but if they're lawyers that do this for a living, they're suing you, 'cause they're not gonna risk the time. You see what I'm saying? You got, you got a small ticker, you got thirty days. If, if you get a denial, you gotta go to Circuit Court, so.
To me, it's a little bit concerning how willing the legislature is to stomp all over someone else's property rights by contract, by deeds, by HOA association's security instruments, everything. If your bank says, thou shalt not, the state has said you can. It's, it's, uh, it's amazing the breadth of this, really, to me.
Well, I think that's just the, unfortunately, the administration that we have. Besides, um, Commissioner Taylor saying, you know, uh, the session is coming to a close, um, I think this is the first session that I could finally say, jeez, I didn't get a email today from one of my colleagues at the Maryland Municipal Lawyers Association for something that was at the General Assembly, and them all pounding the paper, saying, you're violating municipal rights, sovereignty, so.
Just not municipal rights. These are the rights of, you know, homeowners across the state, who thought they bought one thing, and now we'll find out that they, in fact, did not. And that's what they bargained for, that's the, based on the price they paid for it, you know? Some people like HOAs, and I'm not a tremendously big fan, but, you know, they do, they do prevent some things, that homeowners have purchased, whether they get a swimming pool and tennis courts, or, you know, houses on two-acre lots, and they have to be X number of thousand square feet. That, that was part of the bargaining price, and the state has said, nope.
My new de, new deputy is from California, used to work in California. He's somewhat used to this.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we're kind of turning into New Jersey, and it's unfortunate.
And, and I think we're, I think Kevin and I are in agreement, we're just getting started, like.
Oh, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think this is.
Keep a watch, let's see what they do.
If, and we don't have this in town, but if it were, for instance, a county property, would it have to perk for, you know, an additional dwelling? Do you know what I mean? It says, it says like health and safety kind of rules all still apply. Well, in town, you're gonna hook up the Maryland American, so it's really not going to be an issue.
Yeah.
I guess you'd have to tap into the sewer connection too, but if you, if you live on a five-acre lot in the county, you have to pass a perk test to get a house put on it, and then they'll tell you how many bedrooms you can have, based on, you know, how much your lot can handle, so.
That would probably be a circumstance where the health, safety, and well-being would knock it back. Um, because if you can't get the basic health services, such as sewer, um, water, to that facility, you're not going to have a dwelling.
So those of us who live in more urban areas are going to be more and more crowded, and the, uh, what I call the sticks, 'cause there's no water and sewer out there, can live on their lovely lots without encroachment by ADUs and their neighbors.
Yeah, unfortunately.
You know, where the wealthier people live, kind of thing. Sometimes.
So I'm looking at the section fi, four-dash-five-oh-four-A-one, and it says that, "Honorable for October one, two thousand twenty-six, each legislative body shall adopt a local, shall adopt a local law authorizing the development of accessory dwelling units in accordance with this section." So that seems to be a mandate that we have to pass something.
Well, we already have the, some municipalities don't have
Okay.
the ability to build an ADU at all. We already have that ability.
So.
Some municipalities don't have ADUs at all.
Right, so, so, so. But they're instructing the passage of a law in accordance with this section, and that's my question. I understand, we have it, so.
Yeah, so that's the question of, obviously, before the commissioners.
Do we need to pass something else that makes sure we check the boxes?
Because the only thing Kevin and I can, unless, I'm speaking for Kevin, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing I have the concern about is the family member, caretaker.
So if we just struck that, we'd be fine.
Yeah.
Do we need to do anything with the power of the planning commission to enforce varying setbacks? I mean, do we need to take that out?
Um, I don't, what do you think?
I think it's essentially, we could, that instruction could be made, uh, at the time somebody submits, or we can include that with the code, either way, but I, I don't think you need to.
I'm not in favor of taking it out, because I hate to see it go, um, but I was just curious about the language that we have in front of us.
Yeah, I, I've, I've got that concern, Commissioner Taylor, because it says, a local law adopted under this section shall exclude blah, blah, blah. It tells us what it has to say. In subsection C, so, I mean, it tells us what we have to say. So I don't think we can, anything where, where, and Liz can look it over, and, you know, we can evaluate this, but any, anywhere where council concludes that, hey, we are required to put this in our bill by October one, then we need to do it.
The section you're looking at isn't related to the setback. The, the shall, that's for section C. The setback's in section D, when it says the local law adopted under the section may not establish setback requirements. And I don't think our code establishes requirements.
It does not. It, it, this is under the guidelines, so it allows the planning commission to impose, but it doesn't say what it can impose.
So our code does not establish setbacks requirements that exceed, right, yeah, right, okay.
No, I, I was looking at the, the language of that, the law adopted by this, shall exclude the development of an accessory dwelling unit from the calculation of density and the application of any measures limiting residential growth that pertain to the lot, parcel, or tract. And I would submit that a setback is a measure that limits potential development of that lot. So first thing you look at when you buy a lot, what are my setbacks?
Which are not listed. There's no, there's no additional setback for an ADU.
I'm concerned, I'm not saying one way or another, but I, I get your point, Jake, I, I do, about they also double down in another area about it, but this. You know. This, this, this mega exclusion doesn't stop at the word density. It goes on to the application of any measures limiting. That concerns me.
But I, I think when they say may not exceed setback requirements that exceed the existing accessory structures, setback requirements, that means that existing accessory structure setback requirements are permissible.
Correct.
Right. So in, in that instance, it's not that any setback would be a measure that limits residential growth, because they're explicitly permitting some setback requirements.
I think they start off saying any of them would be, and then they carve out an exception to that rule.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think we're on the same page.
So my, my point being, I, I don't think we can just sort of just let it slide, let it ride, and wait for the lawsuit one day. I think that council needs, we need to instruct council to seriously evaluate, you know, what is the minimum that the law requires us to do.
I agree with Jim. I, I am, I've never been a fan of just leaving it there and wait for somebody to sue us to change the rules. I mean, what the rules are, are the rules, and I don't like the rules, but, you know.
We could, we could put together a, an amendment, proposed amendment, have you take a look at it.
What does it require us to do that we haven't done? Is there anything that we're doing that we're not supposed to do, whatever? And, and, and fix it both in the development regs and elsewhere. But we have until October first, twenty twenty-six to do it, so it's not a god-awful emergency, but.
We'll let it slide through the summer, right?
Yeah, I mean, it could very well be that the whole discussion about, you know, the offer for renting is only aimed at private covenants and doesn't apply. Liz will have to evaluate that, you know? And I'm sure our other municipalities, obviously, everybody else is dealing with this.
Yeah.
So, and you have resources, so.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, the connections there, I think that it'd be a wise thing to do.
They're not happy with it. Uh, they echo what Mayor Edding said. I mean, they just feel like this is a, this is a divesting of your powers and Kevin's powers as.
And the residents. I mean, everyone who lives here, homeowners, that's, that's the really bothersome thing to me.
I get it, but you guys are the, you, you are the first line on zoning. So for the state to come in and say.
And closer to the, you know, what the town, what is appropriate for the town. A small town is, is different than what's appropriate for a big town or a city.
So when someone doesn't like it, we need to say, general assembly, right? Not us, not us.
Well, exactly.
I would point out, too, Jim, you make a good point, that the first section of the law, which is, is regarding our code, is in the land use article, which is, which regulates the authority of municipalities to regulate, uh, local governments. Second part is in the real property article.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a well-taken point, Jim, is that language might not necessarily prevent us.
That's right, and, and we've got until two thousand twenty-six to figure it out.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, it's the October one, but they, they, so over the course of the next year, because I'm sure Liz has other things on her agenda that Eddie and, and the mayor would like.
Kevin.
Yeah, everybody else is putting demands on her time would like to have done. But, um, yeah, I think it's, it'd be interesting to see how the year, over the next six to nine months, how other council and other towns are, are, you know, what, what conclusions are being reached on, 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 on the reach of the mandates, as opposed to our discretion. What discretion do we have left, is another way to put it.
I agree. So, there you go, Liz. Not at the top of your list, but.
I will add it to the list.
Yep.
But on it. All right, if we're come, finished with that, review of the Maryland law regarding cannabis.
Okeydoke. You have two things. One is the, kind of a highlighted version of this revision to the cannabis law. And, um, on that highlighted version, it is restricting, um, the setback for residential to one hundred feet. Or it's restricting the, um, uh, setback to be equal to a licensed alcoholic beverage retailer. So that's under G, a political subdivision may, by ordinance, establish a distance limitation for dispensaries of up to one hundred feet from an area zone for residential use.
And what's ours currently say?
Five hundred.
Five hundred, that's.
Um, or apply to dispensaries the distance limitation for licensed alcoholic beverage retailers from an area zone for residential use.
And what is that?
And we don't have a setback, we have a setback to schools, but not to residential. Um, if we were to say, apply that to the five hundred, apply five hundred feet to, uh, a liquor store, it would likely create at least two, um, um, non-conforming uses.
And which would those be?
Uh, Bel Air Liquors and Cheers, which is over next to, um, the, the mall.
Okay.
Um, the, I'm trying to think, there was one other one that's in, oh, it's Discount Liquors, uh, on Route one. I didn't see anywhere where they were within five hundred feet.
Right.
So there is a decision that needs to be made regarding whether or not, one, we have the five hundred-foot setback, which doesn't appear to be permitted anymore. Um, that can, we can increase the, the, uh, distance for liquor stores to be five hundred. Um, but that is.
Leaving us with a couple of non-conforming uses, which is less than perfect.
So we would have to revise that liquor, uh, license. Now, we could reduce it to three hundred, or whatever we, we thought to. I know that Bel Air Liquors is going to be, have problems in, even if it was one hundred, because they are super close to some residential, just right behind them. Um, so that's something that Liz and I were looking at, trying to figure out, what's the alternative? And I don't think there is one.
That's measured from building, correct?
Um, right now, the way we define in our code is it's property line to property line. Um, if, uh, the current setback for liquor stores is to school, and it goes building to building, because it specifically says that. We would have to define what we, you know, the setback was going to be. We could make it building to building, and that might give some relief to Bel Air Liquors, but I don't think so.
Because we did building to building for the gun legislation.
Correct. There are several instances in the code where it's building to building, and liquor store is one of them.
Is one of them.
Is one of them. Yeah. The liquor store has one, the U shall not be located closer than three hundred feet from a school building, unless a reduction is granted by the Board of Appeals.
Another thing about the liquor stores, um, you know, Kevin, as a zoning administrator, believes that that terminology in state law, licensed alcoholic beverage retailers, um, if you were going to give an equivalent under the town code, constitutes a liquor store. Here's my problem with that. That term does not appear anywhere else in either alcohol regs, uh, that section of the code concerning alcohol and cannabis. It has no definition. So if I'm looking at it from the plain meaning of the, the English language, alcohol, uh, licensed alcohol beverage retailers, conceivably, that could include taverns. Or bars, IBC. They are licensed alcohol beverage retailers. The only distinction between a liquor store and a tavern under the town code is whether or not it's permitted to be consumed on-site. So one thing that I suggested to Kevin, we may want to discuss with you, is maybe amending the definition of a liquor store to somehow include the terminology of licensed alcohol beverage retailers, which would carve out all of the taverns from application of that section. With that, does that make sense?
Our current definition, the, the difference in our definitions is consumption off-site for liquor store and on-site for tavern.
I think an issue we may run into, I, I like that idea. An issue we may run into is that state law does delineate, and they make a distinction. Really, when we talk about liquor law, which is done county by county, we talk about wholesalers, and we talk about retailers. And so that, that word, that licensed alcoholic beverage retailer, my concern is that under Harford County liquor law, taverns, breweries are considered retailers.
I know. Um, but the way the state law sort of indicates is that it's saying the setback is based upon what this terminology setback is under the government's code. So that would, you know, so you would say, okay, what is a licensed alcoholic beverage retailer's setback under the town of Bel Air, Maryland code? And that's what you would have to apply. Does, does that make sense? I, I hear your point. My only issue is, is that, that, that terminology is, you know, what, what, this is a state law. So generally speaking, I can't look to a county code liquor law to.
Well, it's not county code, it's in state law.
I can't find it in state code, that's what I'm saying. That term does not appear. And I've done it multiple different searchways, and looked under alcohol and cannabis section where we are, this statute is codified. I can't find it, Jake. I mean, I cannot find it. So, um, I wish they did, because that would give us a little bit more clear of an answer. Um, so, but they're looking.
Liquor law is set in state law, but by county, so it's.
Correct, so they, yeah, so they give the general parameters, just like cannabis, and then the county can increase.
No, what they, no, it's set at the state level, but it applies differently in the 24 jurisdictions. Liquor law is really weird. So what happens is the delegation, generally what happens is the, the delegation from that county is given broad range to set liquor laws in the state, but it still has to make it through the, you know, the general, the, the full body. And generally, they give what's called local courtesy, which is if, if it's made it through the delegation, if it's a delegation bill, the full body will pass it. Now, you can't do anything crazy, you know, they'll, they, they won't pass anything. But in state law, the, the, the way the article reads is in Allegheny County, this. In Harford County, this. In Garrett County, this.
So conceptually speaking, what a retailer is in Garrett County could be different than what it is in Harford.
It could be.
Exactly. So, uh, I, again, I wish they'd give us the definition they did.
But the county, the local county government has no control over what liquor law is in the county. It's set at the state level in state law, but it's different for every county.
Like, I can't even find a case, like, judicial rendering of, of any kind of decision in liquor law has been, I thought I'd find it there. Nope, can't find it. So anyway, that is something that you guys may want to consider to carve out the taverns versus the liquor stores. Um, and, and I am worried about if we don't make that distinction, and there's an argument, we're going to have, instead of having two potential non-conforming uses, we're going to allow a lot more. Um, and that's an issue. So. Did you go over dispensary to dispensary?
Oh, not yet.
Oh.
There is an allowance, and this is why I provided the, the map. Um, there is an allowance for an increase to the dispensary to dispensary separation requirement. Right, uh, it's one thousand feet, but it allows to be inclu- to be increased to a, uh, half a mile, right?
Yes.
Half a mile.
Half a mile, but we'd have to get it on the books by July the first.
Yeah.
But we already have it on the books.
Okay.
So we already have some cannabis setback.
Right, half a mile?
No, but that, that's brand new.
Yeah, I think one of the things here, and this is something that Liz and I talked about, was whether or not, I mean, somebody, I think the way that they're talking about here is they want to make sure each municipality or county passes a law relative to cannabis, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't change that law in the future. It, it, you know, once it's set by July one, you can't change it.
So it's, it's your view that even though it says you've got to adopt an ordinance under subsection C, otherwise you'll be subject to subsection B, even after July first, you think that we can avail ourselves of the benefits of subsection C?
I mean, I, I would obviously prefer to move quickly if we can, but I, you know, we already have that section in.
Yep, we have an ordinance that, that regulates cannabis.
Yeah.
If that ordinance changes from one thousand feet to a half a mile.
Ours says a thousand feet between dispensaries?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, which is what they originally had said, I think, as a, as a limit. Mike, is there any way we could get a, like, uh, this passed by July first?
By July first?
Mm-hmm.
Draft it up, get it going.
Get it going.
I'm sorry, it would be an ordinance, so you would have to, uh, have a public hearing. So you just have to have an emergency, some emergency meetings outside of the normal schedule.
But is there still time to have the appropriate emergency meetings by July first for adoption? Because it's a development reg, right?
Probably not, because we have to have a solid two weeks under the code for, for.
I mean, you can always cite that provision of Maryland law as a reason to pass it in an emergency fashion, given the constraints given by the state legislative body.
I am all for trying to get this on the books.
Well, so what is the?
Why don't we go for July first, what's to do though?
Just to be on the safe side, yeah.
Yeah, to do the half mile.
Well, we've got a thousand feet right now.
Correct.
If you look at the map that Kevin drew, provide, only what's in green is where a dispensary could be.
If you look at your map, it's, and remember, this map was drawn before the Hartford Mall apartments were approved. So therefore, you can pretty much remove anything that's on the Hartford Mall side, uh, property. But the, um, uh, the idea there is if it was a half a mile, it's likely that if we ever got a cannabis dispensary, there would only be one.
Right.
Right. So with a thousand feet, you'd still be able to have more than one in what's left of, which is probably Bel Air Plaza and Tollgate Market.
I mean, it would be shoehorning in, but yeah, they would have to be.
Four corners, yeah.
Right, depends on where they were in.
Well, three. Well, it would also depend. Well, three. Well, it also depend, correct me if I'm wrong, if the county put in a dispensary within that period, even though it's outside the municipal limits, that would still-
It's a good question. I mean, if one's in the county, one's in the town.
Yeah.
Uh, it'd depend on whether or not the county and the town have the same regulations, maybe. Uh, there would have, that would be something we'd have to look at.
Well, it could be two-sided. I mean, we'll say, ours might say a thousand feet, if there's a county one within a thousand feet, and they want to put one in the town limits, that would not meet. The county may have, if there's one in the town, and they may only have a five hundred foot or whatever.
Right.
Then they could put it in the county at five hundred feet from a town.
Yeah, from, yeah, that's up to them.
That would be up to them. But we would still account for the fact that there's a cannabis dispensary, no matter where, whose jurisdiction it is in, it would count for us.
Correct. What, one thing that you want to, and I understand the need, the desire to increase the setbacks, but you cannot outlaw it. You cannot, you cannot, that was one thing we can't. We've really severely limited it. The problem is, is that where the green area is on the map where it's delineated is very, very close to the county line.
Right.
So it could conceptually be within, even now, a thousand feet. Um, so we couldn't say, nope, nope cannabis, sorry, you know, there's one in the county and you're just out of luck. That might cause an issue. I'm just pointing that out. So, right now, the way I read it and the way we wrote it, it doesn't give a distinction whether or not the one dispensary versus the other is in the county versus the town. So, conceptually, it would apply. It just says dispensary.
Right.
So, um, just keep that in mind, okay? Did you want to go, is the thought to go up to the half mile?
I'd like to go up to the half mile.
I would too.
Okay, okay.
So we can make those changes at the same time we do the other?
Yeah, sounds good.
Um, well, the advert-
And that has to be done by July first?
Yeah.
Has to be adopted by July first by ordinance.
So it doesn't have to be effective.
Right, just has to be adopted.
So we would have to start advertising like-
Now.
Tomorrow. Because it's a two-week delay. You would be introducing it next Monday, and then, um, we would have to be two weeks from whenever we advertise it would be the hearing. I'm deferring to you, Mike, but I think that's the way it would work.
I don't think you got two weeks.
I don't think you have two weeks if you-
That's what I'm looking at.
If you, even if you-
Today's the tenth.
Eighteen twenty-five.
Well, but the EJIS only publishes on Fridays and Wednesdays, and it's two weeks from the date of the first newspaper ad.
So it would be this Friday.
So if you put a newspaper ad-
Twenty twenty-seven.
Friday, that means we have to meet tomorrow and, or Thursday and adopt, so.
You can advertise, you can introduce after you've advertised. There's no reason why you wouldn't.
I suppose you could do that.
So if we advertise this Friday, introduced on the seventeenth, we could in theory have a meeting on Monday, June thirtieth, and adopt it, have a public hearing.
Uh, yeah, I think you got that right. Because you would, you would introduce it on the sixteenth, right? I say that right?
Oh, yeah, the sixteenth, not the seventeenth. That's right, yeah.
You would have a full, two weeks in June then, if you advertised on Friday the thirteenth.
Right, there you go. So advertise on Friday, introduce on Monday, the sixteenth, and have the public hearing on June thirtieth?
You would make the deadline by the first to adopt it.
So the distance limitation between dispensaries, we don't have to have a similar distance between alcohol liquor stores?
No.
No.
That's not in the code, or that's not in the law, rather.
Yeah, correct.
Everything else is kind of geared to that, but the distance between dispensaries and liquor stores is different. They don't have to be the same.
Right. So we looking at five hundred feet for liquor stores?
Um, no, that would be a standard coordinating, right? Oh, that's right. Yeah, are you okay with emergency?
Thirty would be an emergency session.
Correct, it would be.
Yeah, on the thirtieth, okay.
We don't have to have, we don't have to change the liquor store distance.
By July first.
By July first.
Right now, the liquor store distance is, um-
Not specified.
Is to a school. So if you want to restrict, I mean, if we're changing this, we might as well change everything at the same time, but it's up to you.
I mean, the way I look at it is that we've got one section which is extremely time-sensitive and that we have some general consensus about wanting to make the change. The liquor store thing has a lot of contingents, parts.
Yeah.
So I'm not necessarily opposed to doing them separately, because I think we might want to give more consideration to that, because that's a more, that's a broader, more complex topic. This is a very simple, do we want a thousand feet, or do we want half a mile? And I think we want half a mile, and that's pretty easy to say that's what we want. The only caveat is we have to do it by July first, so that's the direction I think we should head.
I agree.
And I'd like to know what's that, at least for liquor stores we have now, what's that maximum distance so we don't make them non-compliant?
Sure.
And we're not sure on that, so we can wait on that until we get that information, and then we can craft the liquor law, the liquor distance for liquor stores then.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Small, this particular change should be pretty easy to draft. It should just be changing one number to another number.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I think that is definitely the way to go, and here again, the legislature has done us the favor of forcing us to allow cannabis when in other states, I'm not aware of any state that has done it this way. Every other state used a carrot. Um, we will give you some of the revenue from cannabis if you will allow it, because it is still illegal at the federal level. And, I mean, the memos on not really pursuing any enforcement on cannabis really seem to be geared towards people who are just users, not having actual businesses that are actual drug dealers in a brick and mortar store on Main Street. I just don't know what they were thinking. And maybe the federal government will move towards, you know, decriminalizing this, but so far they haven't. It is still a crime at the federal level. And these are actual drug dealers on Main Street, not somebody's, you know, smoking a joint in their basement or something.
Can't go through a federal insured bank.
Can't. They can't bank, which means they're a huge risk for security. They also can't use credit, credit cards will not allow their cards to be used because of their concerns about violating federal law. So it's essentially a cash business, which is another whole set of, like, security risks that, not only for the business, but for the police departments that, you know, have to police in those areas that have them. So, you know, another well-thought-out idea from our state legislature.
There's a big fight in Texas right now over the legalization. It's back and forth, so it'll be interesting to see.
I'm not sure really if somebody actually challenged this in Maryland. I'm not sure Maryland can tell us we must allow illegal activity. It's still against the law federally. I mean, I don't, I don't, you can't get a handgun permit and be a regular habitual user of marijuana. I'm not sure what the bar looks at it as anymore. I mean, you're breaking the law. You're not supposed to. It makes, it makes no sense. When you look at it outside of this narrow, do we want to, and there is nobody sitting in jail who's just a casual marijuana user. There are none. That, that's like, it's a red herring, it's a smoke and mirrors game. It's not true. It's a lie. So, anyway. Yes, no pun intended.
I think it's always, to add to what you said, you know, from a legal perspective, you know, I think it's always interesting from an academic standpoint, given that it's so socially accepted, but in the legal realm, it's not acceptable. You know, um, I'm a licensed title producer and I issue title policies, and first of all, I'm not allowed to issue any title policy where I know the buyer is utilizing the purposes, utilizing the property for the purposes of a dispensary, a growther, growing marijuana or anything. And in the event I do issue a policy, because I don't know what their intended use is, the minute that you file a claim, this is for title insurance. This isn't like your place broke, you know, burnt down. Chicago Title will say, here's your premium, have a nice day. I'm not covering it.
I had no idea. It's the little quirks like that, that people don't, you know, people that, I think many people think it's legal because Maryland has said it's legal and don't realize that tomorrow, the federal government could wake up and decide they're going to start enforcing that stuff.
Yeah.
And come and take your business, and your house, and your car, and everything else. I don't think people really understand some of the risks that they're taking. And I think it's kind of unfair to people to leave them in that predicament. And then CDL drivers can't use marijuana, police officers can't use marijuana. I mean, you know, because it's against the law. So certain segments of the population still have to abide by those laws, and then certain segments, you know, it doesn't, doesn't really matter. So I don't, uh-
And it's worth mentioning that what we're talking about in front of us has nothing to do with what you can and can't do in the privacy of your own home. We're talking about bringing it into the public sphere.
Nothing, right.
Yeah, you know.
Right. You're talking about a business. A business, a commercial endeavor here.
You know, and I think that we have a, we have an obligation to, we have an obligation to pursue, um, the strongest policy that we can that the state allows.
To minimize what it's going to do to our community. Because I have seen, I've visited other places where it is just a nightmare. It stinks, and people are just wandering around high. It's, it's, it's not a community I want to live in, and so we'll be at the max of one, and we'll see if anybody decides to want to come here.
No one can say that we're outlawing it, because the whole distance rule is contingent on the fact that one already exists. So therefore, by nature, you know, not outlawed.
Not outlawed. All right. We have.
Right.
And people, so I've seen people on social media who are hoping that one comes here, and I, you know, I mean, there's that segment of the population, but-
And we had one that just popped up, didn't we?
Oh, yeah.
We had one that, yeah.
One that we had to violate.
We had to, we had to shut that down real fast.
That's the other problem with making it legal, then you have other folks who haven't jumped through all the regulatory hurdles and think, well, you know, I'll just open up one too.
And their attitude was, state law permits it, so I can do it. And we're like, no.
That's been a real problem in New York, and they're actually not really doing too much to squash those that are not legal, legal illegal activity.
One, Eddie and I attended a seminar, I don't know, about a year ago, year and a half ago, and it was almost being celebrated.
Oh, I was there. That was the one-day symposium in Indianapolis or whatever, and I was like, welcome these businesses to your community. They're just like any other.
Yeah, this was a big, you know, big bank.
Except they're not. Yeah. They're not. I mean, if you can't bank and you can't use a credit card, you're not just like any other, you know, clothier shop on Main Street. So, oh. All right, so we know our path forward, and our apologies, Mike, for the extra work that you have to do now as an emergency, but we appreciate your efforts.
Yes.
All right.
So to mark everybody's calendar, we're going to have an emergency meeting-
On June the thirtieth.
June the thirtieth, okay?
All right. You guys can tell us what time it is, we'll show up, whatever, whatever it is. I guess our choices are five fifteen and seven o'clock.
That would be great.
I'm sorry.
About four twenty in the afternoon.
Four twenty. That is a much better time. Eddie, I don't know why I didn't think of that. All right. Staff comments. Anybody? Anything weighing heavily on your mind? Charlie does?
No, just quickly, I know Eddie went through all the constructions, but just to give a couple, Homestead Park is completed. The play surface playground installed, it was all done, it's all done, so it looks very good. Kevin did a great job designing. And then, uh, phase three of Thomas George Street, or Bolton Street started, so they also started working on Bolton Street this week, so.
Charlie, just any timeline on the porta potty at Homestead, or at the Homestead Park?
Yeah, I have it scheduled to be delivered July fifth.
Okay.
I'm sorry, seventh, Monday.
Seventh, okay.
The Monday, yeah.
On a Monday, right. Great, thanks. That was a, many people in the community were asking for it, that's why.
All right. Nobody else? All right, Commissioner's comments?
Town Administrator mentioned it earlier, but it was a lovely time at Bel Air High School for the enlistment ceremony and the displays and the patriotic music concert. It was just wonderful to host the Army in the heart of Hartford. APG is such an important part of our community, locally and of course nationally. I think I said this a few meetings ago, when we attended either the Army Alliance Meeting or the Chamber of Commerce's Military Appreciation Dinner, it's really, there aren't enough words in the language to express how grateful we are to those who fight our nation's battles, who defend our freedom and keep our homes safe. So it was wonderful to bring those folks into Bel Air, many of whom live in Bel Air, some of whom don't, many of whom live on post. And it was great to meet some of the folks who live on post and bring them into town. And then it was also a real privilege, I know for the mayor, it was certainly a privilege to get up as early as we did yesterday morning to present a proclamation at the Commander's Run, uh, one of the many events that APG is putting on for their week of two-hundred-fiftieth birthday celebrations. Bright and early, it was great to see all the troops out there. And the young man who, it wasn't, it wasn't a race, but there was a young man who completed it in sixteen minutes, which was deeply impressive. So it was, it was great to see that our, our nation's fighters are still as fit as ever, and it was, it was great to be on post. So I know that I was, I was joined by some folks, was joined by Mayor Edding, joined by Commissioner Chismar. I think we were there for, you know, both of those events, and there will, for all those watching at home, there will continue to be events throughout the week as we march towards the big day, which is June fourteenth, nationally celebrating the Army's birthday.
It was very early. It was five AM when I got up before dawn to be there for the six thirty AM start of the Commander's Run, but it was really a privilege to be there for all those people. I mean, it is a huge commitment to join the military, and they're there working hard at the post and doing all sorts of very interesting things, some of which we saw the evening before at the display at the, at the high school. They are really on the cutting edge. They had a really cool thing that looked like a diabetic strip meter, where you, you know, do the skin prick and put it in a little piece, but it was for exposures in the field. So they're, it's not, I don't think, available yet in the field, but it will be able to test in thirty-five seconds whether somebody has been exposed to various agents, and then, you know, be able to triage folks and take them to a, you know, field hospital where they can be treated. So it is just like so amazingly high-tech. And the, the young, um, person there told me that somebody had actually gotten the idea for this like walking through Walgreens, because we were talking about how there's a big crossover between things that the military develops, or, you know, NASA develops, and now we have GPSs that we carry around in our pockets, which is just really amazing. And there's crossover both ways, he said, and that's how that, that particular idea came to somebody, which is just, just brilliant. So I also wanted to thank Public Works for all the work they did in Shamrock Park. It was commented on to us while we were going around. It looked really great. Jake and I did ask how they picked Bel Air, because we were curious, you know, why. We were thrilled to have it here, but we were curious how we got picked, and we figured it was, you know, the terrific Public Works program and, you know, Bel Air Police Department. They were there at the event. But the answer was that Bob Brown said he would take care of everything, and so they said, that sounds great. And they were very happy with how it all turned out. We spoke to the Major General Turn Eddy the next day and said he thought it was a great concert and a great venue for it, so everybody was very happy. And everybody worked really hard, and I know it was twice as hard, because the weather was so unpredictable. Nobody knew whether it was going to be outside or inside, so he had to prepare for both. So everybody did a really terrific job, and, you know, thank you to everybody for your hard work. It was terrific. I can't believe that the US Army is actually older than our country, um, which was something I learned reading our proclamation and, you know, looking into the Army's history, which is just amazing. So their two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday is actually this Saturday. So congratulations to everybody.
It was raised shortly following the battles of Lexington and Concord. The Continental Congress authorized a standing army which hurdled us towards the revolution when our country was born. So there could be no United States without a United States Army. Could never have happened.
And they still have the same battle cry, this will defend. So they're, they've been around since before the nation. I knew Jake would know all that history, but for me, it was, I had no idea they were older than the country itself. That, that's pretty amazing.
Elevating a little-known British Colonel by the name of George Washington as its commander-in-chief, right, so.
They picked the right guy. They picked the right guy, for sure. All right. Anyone else have any Commissioner's comments?
Um, no. Well, Eddie brought up about the MML and the Banner City-
Oh, that's right.
-thing, and I don't know who was, so who would represent? You'll be there?
You'll be there. Jake?
I have had a complication. I may not be able to make it down.
Okay.
Still working that out, and I've got to email Christine when I know for sure, because I know that that's going to impact some things, but I, I might not be able to make it after all.
And I know Eddie's also going to be there. And did you say Dave was coming as well, Dave Anderson? Or is it just the three of us?
Dave.
Dave is, okay. So that's the panoply of people who are coming. I'll be happy to be the person.
That's fine. No, and I'm just, that's what I mean. I didn't know who was all going.
Yeah, now you know who was all going.
Now we know who all's going, and we know, okay.
And we'll let Christine know.
Just wanted to clarify that.
All right. So we will have somebody there. I always guarantee that somebody will be there. I don't know who it'll be, but-
All right. So we will have somebody there. I always guarantee that somebody will be there. I don't know who it'll be, but somebody will be there. And that, I am planning to be there, so. All right. Any other Commissioner's comments? I'm glad you remembered to bring that up. All right, in that case, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I move that we go in the closed session. The purpose is this portion of the meeting will be closed on the provisions of the Maryland Open Meetings Act, general provision, Article three dash two oh five B fourteen.
That'd be three oh five.
Three oh, is that, is that what I said?
You said two.
Two oh five. Getting ahead of myself. Topic of discussion, to discuss the status of the Verizon Cable Television Franchise Agreement renewal contract negotiation, and the reason for closed session discussion of above topics is for public discussion. This matter would adversely impact the town's ability to participate effectively in the, in the negotiation process by revealing the town's terms or exposing negotiation priorities.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. And any discussion of this? No. All right, Mr. Krantz, I think we're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the vote to go into closed session. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Plan on returning?
And for the purposes of those folks who might be viewing at home, we will only be, uh, the only further business that would be conducted is adjournment. We will not be conducting any further public business this evening.
We are in closed session.